So I will call the public hearing for the water wastewater budget to order. It is six o'clock. How do you want to proceed with?
First and then the gentleman here. You ready?
I am ready.
In your package, it is the proposed water wastewater budget for FY 2015. The budget was for the board to receive a proposed budget and change that to a new incentive. But it's the required or public services because the proposed budget is receiving. So actually, we take that the public hearing. There is an action later on the agenda for the Riker Board meeting following the last meeting. Listen at the last meeting, there are some significant increases needed to address regulatory requirements. The largest item is 105,000 for compost disposal. The cost has increased as regulations around the cost levels is in the compost disturbance hold the cost much higher. In addition, there's an increase of 75,000 in the budget for required lead remediation work. Another requirement for operating permit is camera work to examine our existing lines. There's an initial 55,000 in the budget for this one. Among other notable changes include increased health insurance costs and your possibility adjustments to step increases. Actually, at this budget, we need to have an increase in the water wastewater rates. Please remember that the water wastewater are utilities covered by the state road operating permits. And the work must be done. It is critical if the budget is sufficient to support the utilities. We don't have the option of not adhering to regulations or not fixing breaks in laws. Also, on the way back, last year, both Roy and Nate mentioned that we are also right the roads. We're behind on our defermentance on our water and sewer lines as well. So while we're doing, working on these great projects to replace the water and sewer lines, there's tens of thousands of feet more that is going to need to be done. So we really need to go up with an RSNS for both those lines. The equivalent of RSNS for both those lines as well and get us onto a, into a position where we still supply water and wastewater. Which can't exist without its service. So I guess that's all of, so with that, in the proposal you're seeing, what we're recommending is an increase in the water rate from $6 to 100 cubic feet to $6.57 to 100 cubic feet. That's an increase of nine, like 1.7%. And in the sewer rates, an increase from 1183, 1163 to, I'm sorry.
1183.
1183 to 1280. Yeah, but I have one that's on Friday. These old glasses are dying. 1183 is a 1287, an increase of 8.78%. The increases, the increase in the budget is 35,000. And as I, the, more than half of that is the simple three regulatory items I mentioned before. I'm sure we would all love to have a lower budget. But I think Mike and Christie remember back when we were budgeting on a whole based on, instead of on facts. And we ended up owing the fund, one million and a half dollars. We have, the expenses are the expenses. Not do the work that's required. So we're, we have to put forward a responsible budget in order not to borrow from funds.
Sure, I just want to talk about, we were saying, I'm coming up with some kind of plan for our water line replacements. 2018, we had asset management study basically in the downtown area, not including our Springfield. And at that time, we had roughly 50,000 feet of water line that was past life expectancy. With another 40,000 coming up within 10 to 15 years. That leaves me 90,000 feet of pipe. And that was in 2018. I've replaced somewhere around, I lost my notes, but I want to say I've somewhere around 7,000 feet of pipe since then. I need to be on the schedule of replacing 5,000 feet of pipe a year for the next 20 years. Which comes up to about 2.2, 2.5 million dollars a year. Based on today's, that's 2,300, $500 a foot estimate. So somehow we got to get from here to there. And then after those 20 years, you would be on a schedule, you wouldn't be fully caught up, but you'd be closer to the scheduled replacement part. My budget doesn't even reflect close to that 2.5 million dollars I need for that. Like you were saying about the lead. Coming in 2027, the state is going to require us to know what each of our services is out there for each property. So we need to somehow verify that. So that $75,000 I put in there this year is to help offset some costs that are coming down the road. Because I've got a price this year of trying to do 100 water services. And it was going to cost me $100,000. If we'll have those done, it costs about $5,000 a day is the estimates I got. And I need about 20 days to do 100 services. I figure I can probably do between five and seven services a day. Okay. And I got almost 750 I have done. The more I have done before 2027, the better it's going to look when we go into the lead program. Where it's going to be forced upon us. So that's what the $75,000 adds up.
So do we know, I mean, they're asking that we identify, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. That we identify what each service is. We already know most of the services, don't we?
We all, yes.
Are we required to go back and look at services?
We have a chart we have to go through, so we've kept records. And already, the record keeping from way back is not as good as we're doing today. So a lot of them are unknowns, and those unknowns are the ones that we have to go out and find. And like I said, there's about 750 between the homeowner side and the town side.
That are unknown.
That are unknown, that I have to figure out. I don't dare say, but I want to say they're about half and half. Half the town's portion and the other half is probably.
And you use outside services to conduct the survey?
I, I don't have enough manpower with the water projects that we have going on. And approved, well, do the excavation ourselves. We would be there to assist them, but I don't have the full manpower to do it.
And that, and that's the only way to determine is excavation?
It's the most accurate way to do it. They talked about doing some testing. I'm not exactly sure what's involved in testing. Because when we did this study back in 2018, they proved this, what they called power test, which was a machine that supposedly located lead. In fact, telling you that when we used it, it was 50% on and 50% off.
Is, is it possible that, and you can't do a visual verification of the service that's inside a building? Because it's possible it might be, it can be.
I can go in the house and get a visual on the homeowner's side. And that's what we've been trying to do for the last year and a half.
Yeah.
Is we've sent out flyers, we've been knocking on people's doors. So it's getting kind of, we need a response from homeowners' house back on this. We have been working on, but I'm guessing that probably half of our services we're going to have to probably estimate, hydroestimate or airestimate something.
Because you can't get access?
Because half, I do, I need to know what the town's portion is. I'm going to, I was going to focus on the excavation part as, on the town's portion.
Yeah.
With the hopes that I could get into the homeowners as we go forward.
So, so it's possible that the service coming into the building could be copper? But the town's connection on the main could be lead?
Not necessarily lead, but if that were lead boost net. There is a difference. And it's, that's received with the state and what we need to do.
Now, when I was in the plumbing business, there was a percentage that was allowed. How, do you know how they are going to calculate this? Is it like zero tolerance for lead or is it a, not percentage?
The new EPA standard is, I believe, it's going to be down to 10 parts per billion in the test board. Dropping from 15, I believe, for 90% off.
That's in solution.
Yes. Overall, they want don't let. And the other thing is, if it had a, if we have no record of it, or if there was previous record that it was galvanized with a lead boost net, then the state is asking us to replace that because now it's galvanized replacement required. They call GR.
Galvanized replacement is required now?
Because where we find lead boost nets, which is the two to three foot pigtail off the main into the iron pipe service. And they're saying that iron pipe could pour the lead particles and release them. So we're required to replace all the galvanized. That's how, like downstream. That's what we're actually looking for because I've never seen a lead service line in the town Springfield go through the veins that we have in my 25 years here. But I have seen plenty of lead boost nets. We found that, part of our study back in 2018, when we did the lead grant, and we worked with, doing the asset management. And what we found is most of our lead boost nets, or all of our lead boost nets that we found is on 1950s prior cast iron lines. So any asbestos that was put in the 50s is generally copper. I've never seen a lead boost net on those, so I'm with that. We've tried to get clarification from the state on whether, you know, institutional knowledge on that, it's okay. I get different answers, so that also goes into effect on how many services I have to excavate.
Does any of this require a testing of home order of water? If there's suspect of being a lead boost net or you can't identify it?
Yes, you could test for that supposedly. I haven't seen the standards for it yet, what they want. But I think because the lead, there's going to be a new lead top coming out shortly. And by what we've done previously, we've taken first draw. So it sits for 24 hours or 12 hours minimum, take the first draw. I think what's going to come down the road is they're going to want us to take the first draw, the fifth meter, and maybe the seventh meter. So that way there you can see where it's going to be with the lead.
And all that, he hasn't told you the best part yet. We do find that the lead, lead is there. We're required to make sure that the whole line all the way to the house has no lead, which is replacing the whole line. The town is an own home line, those are privately owned. So we can, there's multiple ways to deal with this. We can do the work, put a lien on, but that of course, you have to have all the money to do all that. And the lien would be when the house transfers ownership. Or you come with the grant system to just donate the money, but it's all good and full money to do that with. So, and this is private lines, this is private property, so the state's making the town responsible. As they stand right now, I'm sure if we do all that work, the place that it's wrong. To me, that's putting three quarters of the kids, incredible hook for reach. To make the town responsible for our private land ownership and their grant project. It's another big pile of money that we may be looking at that that's required. We can give them the option, we can give the landlord the option to do it. But it's also good for that, part of that, so it's sort of down to, either have contracts to do all this work. I'm not sure there are.
Percent of what we have in town right now is beyond useful. Obviously, we saw that with.
What, River Street?
River Street. We identified the issue of color drive, which we're going to talk about later tonight. We have a lot of clay title. A big portion of my budget is. The camera work is something that the state requires us to do, something that we have not been good about doing before I came. On as the superintendent. Yeah. A lot of things that we lost, you know exactly what I'm dealing with on this. Christie sat in on the. On the testimony. Water operators. State law. This year when we sat down, budget time, we left our composting budget pretty much at that. See where the chips were going to fall. This year. Well, now we know. That we're. Budget. Okay, to get rid of our biosolids. In the same breath, trying to be a little bit more proactive as wastewater staff and. The state is expecting us to to pay attention to where trash remains, water remains, instead of replacing some of this stuff. Obviously, you're constrained into. The amount of funding that you can come up with and you don't find.
I do want to say the very, the good news is we've got very qualified professionals. Uh, Warren was recognized this year as the water operator here in the state.
Wow.
Uh, and look at the wastewater, Rich the Jew is recognized as the, as the lab analyst for the state. Nation recognized and serving on the state board.
Freezing water on the board. Couple of affairs, maybe. Situation's part of the group. So just trying to dig in and do the best that I can because uh. Yeah. Paying attention to the bills that are coming to the state house. Just trying to network with other wastewater operators around the state. Lots to be said about. And working with people outside of Springfield.
I do know.
I'm very intelligent.
Yes, and I, I just like I was going to say also that we're not the only community that's in this situation, right?
Oh, yes, exactly. Nationwide.
Yeah, yeah, nationwide, exactly. Yeah. So there's, there's some hope here that there might be some funding available somewhere somehow, but I, we can't bank on that.
I'm not banking on it.
We can't bank on that. And I also know we tried to put a bill through this year uh for uh regionalization, if you will, of sludge disposal. And actually, A and R is actually looking into that. You're, so you're on the steering committee, so thank you for that effort.
Trying to get involved with uh. There's an opportunity for Springfield that I think. To do some good things with the infrastructure here in this town. Get a little bit of good PR.
Yeah, so we want to stay on that effort for sure. That's my recommendation. And I, I, I'm watching it.
Biosolids ban is a, is a very scary thought for myself. Great interest in this town. If we have to. If you have to pay the set of this stuff. Down south. It's gonna get, it's gonna get expensive. Biosolids don't go away. I mean, it's, it's a byproduct of wastewater. Sorry, it settles out, so it's your step.
Appreciate it.
All the job both you guys have done, and I realize it's you're in a, you're in a tough spot. You came in when. You didn't necessarily introduce us to this problem, because the problem's been here.
Right.
Uh, but trying to find the solutions and absolutely the, the funding, actually the funding that uh is going to be necessary, so.
So. Five hundred, when we put this bunch together, it really is the bones, you know, I mean. I'm looking to, we look at the equipment side for me. I mean, I need to replace. Factors for. Aspirating for uh. Outboxes and things. Which works wonders for us in emergency situations. That's one of the things that. Budget there. Mine is again twenty years old. Fire. Meters last year, this time. If you guys remember, I, I gave them a proposed new meter thing. That is working great. I have to increase my meters this year slightly because the meters that we have from old style. Battery, there's a battery and supply in there. And again, we started those twenty years ago, so they're all coming up. And we had it yet. On those recently.
Other questions, discussion from board members. This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public has comment. Mike Smith?
Just uh. Not if it answers, I'm going through. The big line that had to come out to me, and I know there's a handful of professional services. I know you've described several of those. Uh, there was a hundred and five thousand dollars increase for one of the professional services. I'm guessing you're talking about the composting.
Is that probably okay?
Yes.
Okay, that, that.
That's, that's the one that I just explained. We left that budget where it was last year. Because we didn't know where it was going. Um, in the nature of biosolids, it's kind of peaks and valleys. We do take septic in the summertime, which is one of our sources of revenue. Our biosolids do grow up in the summertime. And they tail back off. Towards the colder months.
Plan B for this, but a biofuel plant, if we consider. Do we get anything about? Turning that into energy here?
Um, I'm not sure if you could turn uh. Energy, but we do capture our methane. Right, this last winter, Lloyd can attest, he was with me on several days. Our foiler system went down six or eight times last year. Our methane system went down, and when our methane system goes down, it's very costly to repair those things. You know, it's great when they're working nice.
Right.
As Jeff can attest, we're in the beginning stages of twenty year review, which is basically evaluating our wastewater facility and our home stations along with our collection system. Everything that I have down there right now was last upgraded in. Between two thousand and two and two thousand.
Where, where we did CO2 collection.
Yeah.
Yeah, when that thing failed, it was.
Right.
And, and not only was it costing repair, it was costing the EPA, right?
It's costly repair, and those parts I waited months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Parts.
Thank you. And there's only certain number of people that can actually. Right.
Like, yeah, um, yeah, that hundred and five thousand dollars uh in the composting budget. Oh, and by the way, um, looking at the um. Uh, at the, at the budget, just uh, uh, it's broken down into departments, but there's no legend as to what each department is. Is that possible to add that to the budget at some point? You know? When we're looking at each one of these pages.
It's uh, on the summary?
On the summary page, it's.
Well, on, on the summary page, it says something, yep.
The department numbers?
Ninety-one is water.
Oh, I see that. Okay, very good. But it's not on the detailed pages. So uh, we, we had a tour uh at the facility last year, the year before, where we discussed the composting. And, and the idea was to upgrade our dewatering.
Yes.
Capacity and, and uh improve our, our composting and then with the idea of maybe taking in sludge from. Other communities for dewatering and, and composting. But what's the status on that project?
Uh, that is part of our twenty year review, but um. Right now, they're uh. They're going to be spending eighty-nine percent uh preliminary engineering their view to us, and I'm guessing within the next month. We are pursuing a screw press. July twenty-first. Opportunity to talk, Jeff, but July twenty-first, they're bringing a uh screw press to the wastewater facility, and we are going to be piloting. Three of them um in the near future, but the first one is coming in July.
And we'll get some help from the state on this. They're interested in having us do this, right?
Yes, and that's also part of the sludge study that uh Kristen mentioned earlier.
Through A and R.
Yeah, through A and R. You know, basically, they're going to take a look at the, the facilities around the state. Just. They're looking at regionalization.
Yeah, 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 and we want to poise ourselves to be.
I think.
A regional provider.
One thing that we want to do is just make sure that we protect ourselves and we don't get ourselves into a position where. We get regulated in the corner. We end up having to pay a lot of money. Go ahead.
Uh, she's very hard with this. When you start taking it from other sources, who knows what contamination you're hearing or using in your, in your system? Very careful.
So, so uh this PFOs thing, um, that, that, that uh contamination in the, in the sewage. Uh, prevents us from commercial sales of the compost. Is that correct? It can't be used for, for fertilizer? Is that the issue?
The way, the way it is right now, yes.
And there's. No way to remove the PFOs, chemicals?
There are treatment options, but they're very expensive, and it's in the early stages right now. They haven't really confirmed, you know. The city of Montpelier looked at hyalysis, basically burning the PFOs out of that material. But the price tag, I can't remember what it was. It was over twenty million dollars, I believe, for that technology. The other thing that we spoke about in either way. Once you take that PFOs out of that material, it becomes a hazardous waste. What do you do with it? So, uh, do you still need to try also to expose that?
The uh, the testimony we took in uh Montpelier uh was that the cost of removing PFOs from the sludge. Is so much more costlier than trying to remove it from the source. And that's why the state is, uh, in our infinite wisdom, is, is starting to ban certain products from commercial sale.
Yes.
And that's the goal, is to remove it at the beginning, then you don't have to deal with it.
Right now, the way it is, Mike, is you, when, when you're putting it on a site. Site that you've identified for, for, for land application, they need to go in there, gather up the soils, they look at the background levels of the soils. Before they'll even consider laying the plant. And uh, obviously, your biosolids needs to be tested accordingly as well. So, you know, the, the background soils need to be passed before you begin land apply. What you have.
Hmm.
They're using soil amendments to try and uh. Make sense with that to, to knock down the PFOs.
There's a concentration, yeah, yeah.
Um, so, so this pressing in broying, you end up with the pellets that we saw down in Rockingham.
Right.
There is a commercial. Entity that will take that product.
Yes.
And that's what we're doing now.
We'll use it for fertilizer.
Yeah, and for industrial locations.
Right, and it's all about volume reduction. So let's just say they do regulate this out of land application. The way you. You've got to light the load. So you run it through a screw press, you put it through a dryer, you take as much as that water away out of it as you can. Spend less money disposing of it.
And you run that right back through the system. Through the, the treatment system, that water?
The water, yes, the water goes back through, the filter goes back through the system.
Yep. Um, so I, I've got one other question too about this two and a half, uh, two point two to two and a half million dollars for water line replacement. Now, we've got a lot of projects that we're doing right now, and they're in the neighborhoods around three million dollars for these. HIJK. Projects. Um, and, and, and you're using that three million dollars to give you a rough approximation of what it's going to cost to replace these water lines. Uh, but we're doing those on bonds and we're amortizing those over the life of the, of the, the, the pipe. Um, and.
The life of the bond.
The bond is thirty years, okay? Forty years? Yeah, that's right, forty years at zero percent for the last one. Uh, uh. Will we be bonding every year to do this work? Is that the proposal?
My guess is, is, is you'd bond every fourth or fifth year for a larger amount, because you only do so much work each year. But I don't think you want to be bonding every year. I think you'd bond a larger amount every five years, increase the work.
That's what we do with the water.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, I mean, our total budget for, for uh water and sewer is uh four point six million dollars. So adding two point five million dollars every year.
It's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
Yes.
I mean, we're talking about uh, uh, eight point nine percent rate increase. And, and now you're, you know, you're saying two point five million dollars. I mean, that's over fifty percent, so. That's a, that's a pretty substantial increase.
I'm like, that's, that's where I stand. I'm trying, I'm trying to get from here and trying to figure out how we, how we fix this.
And, 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 and after, you know, and so you take the two point five million dollars in, in one year, but at, at the end of twenty years. Uh, you, you've got forty mi, forty, forty year notes, and you, and you, you, you're, you're going to be. Adding. Uh. Twenty, twenty-five, five, forty million, fifty million dollars to the, to the, to the uh indebtedness of the town, right?
It, well, i- if you don't get the same package that you've been getting, we're, we're, we're getting fifty percent subsidy and zero percent interest and. But of course, you have to think the funding package will be in, in the future. But I, I want to remind you, Warren, that in between uh nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and one, uh, we did approve thirty million dollars worth of, of work. Ten million for the treatment plant, ten million for the water pressure, and ten million for the stormwater separation, CSR. Metro water. Operation. It, this is all expensive work and, and we. Not, and we've been doing those targeted projects. We have to deal with our, our distribution, our collection systems. Those are, that's the next step, but. These have always been expensive. We've just not kept up with our distribution systems and collections. Our water distribution. Certainly, our costs.
Town really grew, as you guys know, nineteen hundreds, nineteen fifties. That's the age of most of our infrastructure. After that, you find the plateau, you did the years of the air. It's all coming to the end of its life. At this point, we're basically, yeah. We're, excuse me, we're, we're reactive.
We are, yeah, yeah.
I'm proactive.
Instead of proactive, yeah.
Other, like, yeah, uh, Department ninety-nine capitals, is that the amortization of the bonds that we have outstanding? Or is that new work?
Those, the, those are the ones that you have to take over the next fiscal year.
That's the current portion of the indebtedness that we have with the bonds. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And uh, one other question. Um, I, I see that you've attached the summary that includes uh proposed rates for water and sewer. Um. And, and uh, that covers the, the budget increase of uh three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um. We have a separate meeting where we set the actual rates. This is just an estimate right now. We're not setting the rate.
Set the rates. The rates currently go to the vector I first.
Right, so we're going to be setting the rates? Okay, do these rates reflect the discussion that we had previously about uh seeking to maintain um minimum funding. Based on user fees to cover indebtedness? Do you recall that discussion?
Mike, uh, Mike, you're Mike, Jeff?
Yes, I, I, I do recall that discussion. And what, what we, what we've been doing is we've been increasing this uh, the. Meter charge by fifteen percent a year to bring it up, and with the idea being that all new debt will be added into the fixed charge, not into the user fee. And by bringing up fifteen percent a year, there will be, there'll be the first, the first um. Lot, new loan, and it comes on, will true up and will be in a pretty close place. So you won't see a big jump in, in the meter rates at that point. Even. I'm grabbing sneak it up fifteen percent a year.
And, and we don't set those rates as a select board. You set those rates. Is that what I'm hearing?
We propose this, this, this is what we're proposing to you, by you guys, what we've done. This is the basic numbers that we came up with, based on selling nineteen million two hundred and water. What we based it on. And that is the average over the last twenty years. Obviously, it's quite.
The six.
Past year.
The six fifty-five, yeah.
But if you look at the, at history, we've been in this area.
These aren't the, but these aren't the user rates. These aren't the meter charges. These are the u- usage rates, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. About myself clear?
Right, but we've been making adjustments on that now for a period of years.
Yeah, to, to transition over to that would have been a huge increase all once in the, in the meter charge, which we felt would have been a huge disadvantage to the, the older single people. Because the meter charge is the same whether you're a single person who, who uses two hundred cubic feet in six months, or my family, which uses a lot more than two hundred cubic feet in six months. Um, so we, so we're staggering that, that in over a period of time, uh, with the plan being in, in twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty-eight. When the new, when the first bond payment comes to on I, then we'll, we'll true up at that point, and there should be debt across, so you're not seeing a huge increase in the meter rate.
I believe we started this in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. When we started in.
Is it that that one?
Yes, when we started in.
That's, well, no, um, we, yes, that was not a specific, when Rick was in charge.
Right.
Is when we started this fifteen percent a year.
Right.
And.
And then we've been dating eighteen.
I wasn't there since twenty-one.
I, I guess, I, I guess I didn't make myself clear. Um, so these are the rates that you're proposing. Six, six fifty-five per hundred for the water and, and a twelve eighty-seven per hundred for the, the, the sewer. Those are the rates that, that our users would pay in fiscal twenty-six, starting July first, okay? But separately, they're also billed individually for the meter charges.
Correct.
Okay, and we don't see those rates here. You're telling me that you've been adjusting them every year, and my question is, do we, as a select board. Have purview over setting those rates, or do you set them separately? Is that what you're telling me, that you set them separately, that they're not part of this discussion?
Yeah, we've been setting, well, we've been setting them separately simply based on that discussion where you could be doing a piece of fifty percent a year. So we haven't changed that.
But you do have a schedule of rates.
Yeah.
And we could be privy to those rates.
Of course.
Thanks.
It's a different meter size. It's five eighths of the usual residential, but it was also four inches, I think.
Yes, based on the size of the. Seven, seven fifteen for one inch, eight hundred and six months.
And we can get them that. We'll, we'll send you the schedule.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to make mention again to what Jeff said is those charges, meter charges, have been adjusted for a few years now. And the goal is by twenty twenty-seven, from what I'm hearing, is that we will be at a spot where we can, it'll just zero out, if you will. Of the meter charges will be what they are. Not owing the other fund. The user fund.
Well, and the, and the meter charge, the meter charge will be based on. On actually covering your, your long term, your long term debt, because. We couldn't get there all at once, because, because you, you guys should call, we had several different kinds of schedules, trying to make it all work at once, and they just didn't. So we had to step in anyway.
I remember working on apple correcting, we were working on trying to find the tier. Thing and. Several different options.
We have, we have. Yeah, but I, we'll get to them.
Any other questions on the water wastewater budget from board members or public? Not seeing any attempts to speak any further. Um. Those comments are what we're seeing right there. We're, that's what, that's recording what we're saying. All right, so let's not chat questions. Very good. Uh, we don't allow chat, do we, or no? Excellent. So if there aren't any other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing for the water wastewater budget. And we will be taking action on this in our regular session. Thank you both for coming in, and I'm assuming you're going to hang around for a bit.
Yes.
So I would like to now call the regular meeting to order, uh, and I'd like to start off with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance stood in line of the United States of America, in two thousand and public, for which we stand as one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you for that. Starting on my left, the roll call. Michael Martin, Christie Morse.
Tara Chase.
Michael Schreiber.
That is a, a full hearing tonight, a full board tonight. That's excellent. Uh, we do not have the minutes for the meeting.
The book will do those next time.
So do we have any requested additions to the agenda?
Not for me.
Not for me? Excellent. Uh, so at this time, we're going to move into local control uh for the annual liquor and tobacco license renewals, as well as an outdoor catering and open container permit for the street fest on July second, July twelfth.
Okay, um, so there, there are a couple annual liquor license renewals um in the packet, that is the part of the middle, but they are for uh. Groundpoint Country Club Inc., this is Groundpoint Country Club Inc., uh, first class uh liquor license, Groundpoint Country Club Inc., this is uh, Groundpoint Country Club Inc. For a third class um renewal, and Groundpoint Country Club Inc., this is Groundpoint Country Club Inc., um, for a consumption curve. And additionally, uh, rest of food, which is adopted, this is Copper Fox, is in, uh, is applied for more for third class liquor license. Um, that's only a special meaning for last year, so. Wrong if you don't. So, uh, we recommend that all these licenses, um, will be approved by the select.
So moved.
Second. I'm works you found.
We do have a motion, you all set? We do have a motion on the floor and seconded to approve the uh four sets of liquor license. Renewals that is for a first class, a third class, and outside consumption for the Groundpoint Country Club Inc., as well as a third class for the Copper Fox. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing, seeing none, comments from the audience? In hearing, seeing none, I'll call for the roll, starting on my left, Heather Pram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morse says aye.
Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Smith.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative, and they're sole group.
Thank you. So second item includes applications for catering permit and an open for data permit. One item, so for strip of all moves proposed, street test on July twelfth. The open account requirement is not like people could also board signature. This is a, together, in the right of the address, I'll give that permanent approval. These are all together. Um, this is an ongoing print, uh, ongoing event, just. Um, this is an ongoing print, uh, ongoing event, just, it's a third year for it. And Chief Berman and I have reviewed their plans. We reported on the outside consumption permit, and we recommend that more approval.
So moved.
Second.
Members are competing now. And we do have a motion and seconded to approve the catering permit for, uh, Rustic Roof LLC. Just that one event. On July twelfth.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion from board members?
And, and the open container permit.
Catering permit and the open, I knew there was something else there.
Yep.
And that does include the, uh, open container permit.
Yes, motion includes both.
It has to be at the, come two parts. There isn't any further discussion from board members? Any comments from the audience, including Zoom participants? Not seeing any attempts to speak. Call for the votes. Starting on my left with Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Smith.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative. And it's sole proof.
So that's all I have for local control.
Excellent. With that being said, we'll move out of local control. And into new business. And the first item on new business is to act on an event permit for the street fest, July twelfth.
Yes, we're calling moves to the permit for five, to ensure it's the whole street fest on July twelfth from three, um, PM to eight PM. This is a recurring event and there have been no issues in the past. Uh, we check with the chief and we both recommend the board approve the that.
Such pleasure of the board.
I think that we approve the event permit for the street fest.
Thank you, members. We do have a motion and seconded to approve the street fest permit for July twelfth, twenty twenty-five. For Springfield on the move. And July twelfth from three PM to eight PM. Is there any further discussion from board members? Comments from the audience? Including Zoom participants? Hearing, seeing none. We'll call for the vote. Starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris. Says aye. And Tara Chase.
Aye.
Got all of those here. Mike Smith.
Aye.
That's five in the affirmative and that is also approved. Item number two. Act on the water wastewater budget. Sounds familiar.
Uh, there was a public hearing just a little bit ago on, on the water wastewater budget. Uh, this is the item where we can actually, um, act on the budget. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, if there were no changes discussed at the public hearing, I ask the board to take the following motion. Uh, to approve the budget of four million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Um, with a water rate of six dollars, six thousand five cents per hundred cubic feet and a sewer rate of twelve dollars eighty-seven cents per cubic.
I'll make a motion to approve the water wastewater budget. I'll second.
Thank you, members. We do have a motion and seconded to approve the water wastewater budget of four million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. A water rate set at six dollars and fifty-five cents per hundred cubic foot. And the sewer rate of twelve dollars eighty-seven cents per hundred cubic feet. Is there any further discussion from board members? Mike Smith.
Um, just a personal question. So the rest of my, clearly they understand how the water rates. Um, your, of the sewer rate. How do you monitor or how do you like getting charged per hundred square feet of sewer?
The sewer is based off what you use for water. So if I'm watering my lawn or my garden, that's considered sewer. So when I planted my new lawn and had the water in for six weeks, then all went to the ground.
Or.
Washing car or fillet pool.
Maybe the alternative is that we set, we set it at ninety percent, but then your rate will be up. But it's just, it's just, uh, that one's just the calculation.
But basically, there's no way to meter the output.
Believe me.
I bathe in water at sewer rates just like everybody else. And every time my wife waters her flowers, I'm just watching it go into the ground and I know. You know, twice a year, I'm paying money. So I feel your pain.
Make the other side of that, which we've tried to get away from, is we used to have two meters.
Yeah.
But your meter charge is generally more than one meter.
Really?
We have the same issue with pool. Well, we'll be, your meter twenty-five dollars a feet, and then you're going to fill your pool, which will cost you about ten dollars to do, just build your pool.
And alternatively, you, you, you might go to, go to a restaurant. Sorry, sorry, it's not necessary. You may go to a restaurant in another community and then go back home. So you're importing extras into the wastewater. And that's, uh.
My God. Listen to where he was going with it. We're all there now.
Raise your hand, Jeff.
Further discussion from board members?
No.
No. Comments from the audience or Zoom participants? Hearing, seeing none. I'll call for the vote. Starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase. Doug, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. I got it up a little too late. I, it won't affect what you're doing right now. It's just a, a comment, uh, that I saw on the news as far as the, uh, where the porta potties they're doing and they're recycling the waste. And is that something that the town is looking at doing in the future?
We have not, Doug.
Now, the, the companies that are extracting from septic tanks do pay a fee.
They do. They pay, uh, they pay, uh, they're paying ten, twelve cents per gallon.
So the companies that are extracting from the porta potties. Is, is that not the same septic trucks or is that a?
This is a new concept. Ironically, the company that Doug is referencing, uh, just asked me to approve them to use our facility because they have that in the area. It's a new concept to me. I haven't heard a lot about it. Yeah, I don't think we have any plans at this point.
Okay. We certainly don't want that. Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I saw this on, uh, the news. I think it was either, uh, I think it was probably today, maybe, uh, they, they're taking in, they're recycling and they're turning the waste into fertilizer. And I was wondering if that's something that the town is looking to try to do in the future as far as getting, uh, wa- water, some of the waste, because that's what they're doing with this, this company that does porta potties. They, they're, they're taking, I guess, the, the process out. There's a process that goes through. And then they're turning it into, uh, um, fertilizer. I didn't know if the town was looking at trying to do something like that or not.
Right now, the land application in the state of Vermont is highly restricted. And it is, uh, our sludge is not available to be deposited on by land application. Uh, there are a couple that had, still have permits available, but, uh, mass, uh, use of sludge or waste, human waste into fertilizer, uh, is, is not happening in Vermont.
I would say too, Doug, that, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I would say too, Doug, that, uh, right now, the way that, uh, porta potty waste is handled, it gets mixed with the septic that comes in, that's pumped from, uh, people's septic tanks. Septic systems have been identified as one of the larger contributors of KFOs. Uh, they've actually, um, shut down almost all land applications of any septic in the state of Vermont. So it would be hard to segregate the porta potty waste from the septic, from the septic that gets dealt at our facility.
All set, Doug?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm not clarifying what I saw on TV enough, but I didn't know if they could apply that same process that they had on TV where a company's actually doing it and creating it into fertilizer after it goes through a pasteurized process, I guess. Uh, I guess this company is doing some stuff out of, um, I believe Boston, and they're also doing it, I think, out of, uh, the Burlington area, if I'm not mistaken.
We could certainly speak to our engineers to find out, uh, they have any information about this process.
All right. Any other, uh, comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll call for the question on adopting the wastewater, water budget. Uh, starting on my left with Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Smith.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative. And we have a water wastewater budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, gentlemen, for coming in this evening. Thank, thank you for your patience answering our questions. Item number three, act on the drain layer license renewals.
And this is an annual housekeeping item. Um, we see the memo from Bart Duchesne. And we recommend that the drain layer list be approved, um, the full list.
So pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the rain layer license renewals.
Thank you, members. We do have a motion and seconded to approve the list of drain layer license renewals as presented to us from, uh, the town court and approved by. Big three. Is there any discussion from board members? Comments from the audience or Zoom participants? Hearing, seeing none. I'll call for the vote. Starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Smith.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative. And we have our license renewals. Item number four, another annual event, act on the dog ward.
Yes, each year the town courts create a list of dogs who did not renew their dog licenses. And you're asked on order to the constable to act under this full code and say they want to get all the dogs licensed. The language in the order is very severe, noting that if appropriate, uh, to look down and destroy a mainway or cause to be destroyed on the mainway. All dogs not licensed. This is a wording in state law, twenty DSA section thirty-six twenty-one. It's clear, but no dog needs to be destroyed. Um, it has no dog to be destroyed, struck, have no license. But the wording is from state laws, so it's just, um, we're authorized to sign an order.
This also authorizes the town constable to check on the, the dogs or the licenses.
Yeah.
Pleasure of the board. Act on the dog ward. Sorry. So we do have a motion and seconded to approve the language on the, uh, dog ward enforcement. Part of state law, E R L's bar code. And we have a list of the dogs as presented from the town court. And this authorizes the town constable to enforce the licenses. Discussion from board members.
Have a quick question. Is this ninety-four of normal numbers?
Yes, so they're not similar each year.
There's a late fee for.
Yes, there's a late fee for each shot.
I suspect some of these dogs may have deceased. Passed away.
They're no longer in town.
Yeah. Or moved, yeah. Is there any further discussion from board members? Comments from the audience, including Zoom participants? Seeing, hearing none. I'll call for the vote. Starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Smith.
Aye.
And it's five in the affirmative. And it looks like we have a signature request for this as well. I'm just happy that when I make my signature, that everybody's singing the Jeopardy song. You can hear it. Item number five is act on a private road maintenance, Vine Street and Sioux Drive. It's actually two.
Yeah, the town's been maintaining a private road for many years. Vine Street is a small private road. You should have, sadly, it was a former school. I suspect the town maintained it as a secondary access, um, to the property when it was a school. The other private road is a section of Sioux Drive. The town owned portion of Sioux Drive begins from the street and goes up and then to the left, uh, towards the street. Uh, the private portion of the road breaks to the right. I don't know why town began, um, maintaining the private road. Go back decades. So this was brought until like recently when the private portion of the road failed and caused a damage to the town owned portion of the road. In addition to additional maintenance, there is a likelihood that the town, should anything happen during the maintenance of these roads. One example would be if a plow hit a house or a car while plowing on, on private roads. I would like the board's approval to work with the town attorney to determine if the town can stop maintaining these roads. And if so, um, how best to modify the property, the property.
Go ahead, Heather.
I'll make a motion to approve that Jeff, the town manager or the town attorney, determine if the town can stop maintaining Vine and Seax Drive.
Sioux.
She's all enough from Springfield.
Or Iowa.
Or Iowa.
Or North Dakota.
I'll second. All the bird over here.
Thank you, members. And so we do have a motion and seconded to authorize the town, uh, the town manager to work with the town attorney to determine if the town can stop maintaining portion of Sioux Drive and Vine Street. Is there any discussion from board members? I'm almost thinking, uh, Sioux Drive, the reason we hit that corner was plow access in the wintertime to be able to go up and then back and.
Yeah, which is okay right at that corner, but then the, and the progress and it goes, and it goes up again, and that's where it failed above.
Yeah.
There's a small, um, over there. Failed, that caused the whole, that triggered the whole flood there. Failed to cause the whole, I forget the whole flight there. And so I want to thank both our, oh, it works guys, but also our fire department. Because there wasn't the only road that washed out that during that storm and. Our fire department was over there with a big fire truck and everything helping dig out the. The clogged drains and to make that safe and passable right there at the intersection of Sioux and. I was very pleased when I was over there and saw it being taken there and the fire department, this is a fire. They saw a stretch to help and safety and they showed up and jumped right into it.
Very good. Another discussion from board members? Comments from the audience, including Zoom participants? And just for further information, if we are going to discontinue parts of this, the maintenance, is there a public hearing? We're not discontinuing the road, are we? Or we just can.
We're just continuing the road, it's not, wouldn't be any discontinuance.
Okay.
I just want to make sure there's no heat required.
Very good. Thank you. Not seeing any attempts to speak or. Hands up in the air, so we'll call for the vote, starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Schmidt.
Aye.
And it's five in the affirmative. Jeff, what do you think the process is for that? Time, length of time that.
Well, that's what I want to start now, because the biggest thing unfortunately, these people will want to line up winter maintenance.
Winter maintenance, yeah.
That's why we want to get done as quickly as possible.
Very good. Item number six, act on a contract for road erosion inventory.
In the fall, the town receives a better road grant from the state to update the town. Town, town erosion inventory. Every municipality in the state is required to complete this update by October 31st, 2027. This proposed contract amounts to a regional commission that allows us to meet this requirement. The town has also been notified that we have been approved for $53,000 grants and aid awards to do some of the work identified by the inventory. I recommend that the board approves the contract and ask that they reach a cushion at a cost not to exceed 22,140. But I didn't say the category is strange. So the town's opening 20% of this, which is $4,400, $4,500.
So it's an 80, 80, 20?
It's an 80, 20.
44, 28?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Mount Scotty Regional Commission at a cost not to exceed 22,140.
Thank you, members. We do have a motion and seconded to approve the contract award, the amount of Scotty Regional Commission. For an amount not to exceed $22,140 for the purpose of a road erosion inventory. Further discussion on that, board members, questions? Next trick.
22,140, that doesn't come out of the 53,000.
No, it's a separate thing. We have a grant for 17,000, something, 30% to pay for each other.
So that comes out of the town.
Further discussion from board members? Not seeing any comments from the audience or Zoom participants? Not seeing any hands up for attempts to speak, I'll call for the questions, starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Schmidt.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative and. We'll work towards our road erosion inventory. Item number seven, act on the contract for the town hall parking entry engineering.
Yes, last summer the town received a $200,000 downtown transportation grant to improve the parking image and ADA access to the town hall. The end date of the grant is April 22nd, 2027, so it's time to move forward on the project. Dufrane Group did the preliminary work on the project that was used to obtain the grant. I recommend that the board approve the contract and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with Dufrane Group. For it was an amount not to exceed 62,085.
Just to claim again, what the 63,085?
That's for engineering.
Engineering.
Basically, what's put projects would do is it would. Replace the, replace the parking lot, also replace the entrance and exit with a single entrance exit in the middle. The challenge had been previously that we don't actually, the town doesn't own the exit lane of the parking lot. That we just have a rampway to it, which is why, so it was delayed for a while. Fortunately, the new owner of the building next door is willing to work with the town. And it, and there's actually also another benefit to the town, is he's willing to do the space behind his building into this, this shared lot. Which will improve, or increase our parking places. Then, so you go in and out the single and you have parking on this both sides. And along the building, there'd be a long ramp that goes down, so the people aren't walking in the exit. Walking out or up and down the current entrance to the parking lot, it's not safe. Certainly if you're, if you're sitting and you see it's particularly not safe. So there would be, I'd just say ramp running right along the side of the building down to the first level. And then improving the entrance into the town hall to be able to go on ADA compliant doors, especially by. And all that, so. And this is of course part of the master plan.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the contract and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with Dufrane Group. For an amount not to exceed 63,085 for the town hall parking slash entry engineering.
Thank you, members. We do have a motion on the floor and seconded. To approve the contract with Dufrane Group for the. Town hall parking entry engineering for 63,085 not to exceed. Discussion from board members. The money comes from?
It'll come from, well, it's going to come from a variety of places. It's going to get 80% of the total coverage of this amount. So we cover my downtown transportation. The rest that will become from town match, there's going to be. Use of a couple of the reserve funds for chain wall, there's also a sewer line, there's a sewer line earlier. Where funding comes from like five different places for the whole project.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion from board members? Comments from the audience, including Zoom participants? Not seeing any attempts to speak or hands up. I will call for the votes, starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Schmidt.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative. So approved. Item number eight, act on funding application and engineering contract for sewer line of Cutler Drive.
Yeah, the rest of roughly 63,000, it's a sewer line, it should say. There's a particularly bad cross-country section, because it should go and drive down towards Commonwealth. That has been a maintenance nightmare for several years. In fact, it failed this, this last year and has a very significant insurance claim. So, my source of lieutenant, Hank Fraser, and I would like to start the process of replacing that one. We recommend that the board approve this as a step one clean water feasibility loan for $30,000 to fund initial engineering for this work. We also recommend that the board approve and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with Dufrane Group to exceed $30,000 to do engineering.
You mentioned this is an annoying problem. I remember many years ago that we had open sewage that was in the woods. Down between Cutler Drive and Commonwealth. Did same thing over again?
Same sort of situation. Not only is it compromised, but it's sorely undersized.
Yeah.
It's clay tile. Backup at the ladies home was those roots. That's part of my normal treatment area. That spot hadn't been touched recently.
Recently enough.
Recently enough, yes. Yeah, we also identified a broken pipe a little bit further down from there. Where she gave her equipment out there, so I had to send my crew up there, they had to dig it by hand, place the section. Yeah, it was an ongoing process for over a week.
And unrelated, but the day after this backed up into her house, the snow came off her roof and took off her back bed. This poor lady, it was a double win.
She was very. Considering the situation, she was very, wasn't to deal with, you know, as we could to.
Chairman.
Mike Martin?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to. Authorize the town manager to sign a contract with Dufrane Henry not to exceed $30,000 and also. Dufrane Group, excuse me, not Henry. Henry's gone now. So we still have Dufrane though, right? Bad joke. And also to make application for a. A grant to fund this engineering, preliminary engineer.
Thank you, members. We do have a motion and seconded to authorize the town manager. To sign an application for the engineering contract on a sewer line for Cutler Drive. Loan about for 30,000. Not to exceed 30,000 for the engineering from Dufrane Group. Further discussion from board members? Not seeing any comments from the audience, including Zoom participants? Not seeing any hands up for attempts to speak? I'll call for the vote, starting on my left, Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Schmidt.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative, so approved. Any, we have any idea what the total cost of that project might be or is this what the engineering is going to tell us?
First step of the journey, I'd like to say too, Cutler Drive was part of the project area, the other areas that they're going to look at. Obviously, progress. And all of this. Part of that whole project. It's all in the same shape.
Yeah, yeah. Undersized clay tile, it's. It's a major.
Even worse, I mean, it's a recipe disaster.
And it's cross-country, so it's not easy to get.
Very good. Item number nine, discuss match and timeline for the pedestrian bridge project.
Come on, it's two more items.
No.
Thank you guys.
I hear they're putting sewer across the pedestrian.
Not biting.
Yeah, the town, the town applies for funding to replace the pedestrian bridge between Plaza and Pearl Street. The bridge is in poor condition and is not ADA compliant. The plaza side has steps, not a ramp. The estimated cost of the bridge is somewhere in $4,500, $560. The town receives a transportation alternative grant from the state funded by federal funds. For 80% of the project or up to 550,000, $148,000. While the end date of the grant is until November 1st, 2020, 2030. All the work starts to test on egg, this project should be completed as quickly as possible. We will need to comply with federal program requirements for engineering. This and other funding requirements will take time, as we are seeing with the Leyland and Blakenham Stormwater Project. We're supposed to bring in water from it, it just takes time. To get the jump draw, the government gives us. The town match is 20%, so up to $140,112. These funds could come from either or both, the bridge fund reserve or the sidewalk funds. Since the amount is fairly large, I want, I just want the board to wear the match down. It's important that we do this project. But, so this is more, I don't need the board to approve anything, but there is a match of 140,000. Exceeds by authority of $20,000 in the broker's policy. Make sure you're aware of this before we get to that point.
So I don't, I just looked up on the map this bridge. Do a lot of people use this bridge?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
The hope is that you all would use it. If we're able to successfully do all park street with residential, or she's school with residential. You're going to be able to walk straight over to the plaza.
The other thing, if you get to an ADA compliant ramp, some of the stairs on the plaza, and I'm sure more people would use it. The stairs are, can be difficult. They've been crumbling in the past, we need to repair. Chairman. Mike Martin?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we acknowledge. Receipt of the documentation that's been presented and also approve the expenditure. Up to $140,912 for the town match. I don't think there's anything wrong with doing that. Is there, Mr. Melbus?
No, I think that's great.
Okay, acknowledge receipt, acknowledge the town's responsibility.
Heather, the plug?
Yes, and.
Yeah, yeah.
So we do have a motion and seconded to acknowledge receipt of the Plaza Bridge Replacement Project. Which is $704,560 with an 80% bet. From the state, funded by federal funds, meaning the town's portion is $140,912. Yeah, is there any further discussion from board members?
I have a question.
Sure, Mike Schmidt.
Is the bridge maintained in the winter time?
Yes.
Just trying to gradually do that.
Well, it would be easier once the state.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, that's what I get, that's why with my question.
You can access it from Pearl Street side.
Yeah, but I.
Direct turn around.
Or drive really fast.
Well, the white guy does, so.
Really?
Further discussion from board members? Comments from the audience or Zoom participants? Not seeing any attempts to speak or hands up. I'll call for the vote, starting on my left with Heather Fram.
Aye.
Mike Martin.
Aye.
Christie Morris says aye. Tara Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Schmidt.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative and so approved.
You go back to the next one. Logan, I think you just logged in for Mark holding the call. So the board just acted on the grant for the pedestrian bridge that you helped us obtain, thank you. And they've already approved the contract of March for the road erosion inventory project.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry I'm a little late, I was bouncing around, I was in West Windsor too, just now, but appreciate it and yeah. I mean, for what it's worth, I will say that when I was working on the grant for the pedestrian bridge project. One of the things that, you know, at that time, Donnie had wanted to address was just that, well, it was winter maintenance, actually. Because of the way that the boards are starting to peel up, he didn't feel comfortable sending the plow over that bridge, but, which they had done previously. And so, I mean, at that time anyway, he was having two guys go out there to shovel it. You know, hand shovel. And so that was, you know, one aspect that he was hoping to address with this replacement is the ability to plow it as opposed to shoveling it.
Yeah, Paul Hope, and he's one person servicing many towns. Monday night's a real common night for select. So thank you for getting here, Logan. Everything's fine. We're good. I'll get, I'll sign and get stuff for you tomorrow morning.
All right, sounds great. Thanks.
Logan, while I got you on the Zoom, are we on for Wednesday night?
I hadn't set out an agenda. I was trying to decide. I mean, if you want to be, I can, I'll set out an agenda right now and we can, we can meet to talk about the safety action plan.
That's possibly, I just, I didn't see anything yet. And since you're here, I thought I would ask.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't decided. I, I wasn't sure how busy you were and whether you were trying to just relax and unwind from the long and stressful session. Anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So we hit item nine. We're going to move on to item ten. Possible discussion in action on the RFP, the town manager search.
Yes, the proposals for town manager search were due on June eleventh, twenty twenty five. The town received thirteen proposals. I haven't sent them on the agenda. Should the board wish to discuss and possibly act on it. So I hear, I, I provided you with the report of the subcommittee, which consisted of Christie and Mike. I also provided you with a summary of all thirteen costs, costs on each of the three proposals. And then at your place, there's also the proposals for the three lowest bids. So with that, I'll turn it over to the subcommittee.
Excellent. Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, so the board had authorized us to, to start the process of the search of a new manager by reviewing the RFP, the request for proposals that was sent to these thirteen companies. And I think we got out a little bit over our skis a little bit because we also made decisions for you on your behalf about the, the, the quality of the applications and, and a direction that we'd like to take the, the, the board in terms of, of a selection of a contractor. There, there were proposals from as far away as California, Oregon, and Florida, and price ranges up to thirty three thousand dollars. The, the three companies that we selected for consideration are all based in Vermont, and their price ranges were from ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars, which was certainly more competitive than the others. So we didn't feel comfortable selecting a contractor from as far away as some of these. I think the closest one might have been Livonia, New York. We thought that we weren't going to get good service from them. It'd be a remote control thing. And certainly if they were traveling to the site, there would be expenses that we would bear. We felt as though the three companies in Vermont were, were well qualified to do the work. Vermont League of Cities and Towns had, had done our last search. We think Local is a, is a new company, I think new this year, who's endeavoring to do the same thing. And also Municipal Management Services located here in Springfield is, is staffed by Tom Yenrel, who many of you know was our town manager for a number of years here in Springfield, and he retired and started this business venture, which also includes him continuing to be town manager temporary for a number of different towns. I think he was in Killington, he's been in Woodstock, and maybe been someplace else. I, I think that where we got out over our skis a little bit is, is, is making the decision for the board. But, but I will, I will go ahead, I will go ahead and make our recommendation, which is that we hire Municipal Management Services of Springfield. And in our rationale, I listed on the letter that I had sent to you, but I also would like to enumerate for the public. Tom lives here in town, so his close proximity will certainly give us a, a lot more better access and I think better service. He has probably the most experience of Springfield's town government, having been our town manager for a number of years. He has the most experience with the culture and needs of the Springfield community as well as the select board. He certainly has a broad experience as town manager for us as well as many other communities in Vermont. And his proposal detailed the process and a timeline for recruitment whereby we could be onboarding a new manager by year end. As we're all aware, Mr. Melbus's contract ends on December thirty first. The, the process and, 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 and the concern that some board members may have detailed in his proposal spells out that the town select board will meet with, with the consultant to do a needs assessment where we'll be, we'll have the opportunity to, to discuss what we as, as a board consider to be attributes that we would like the consultant to recruit towards. And we'll have a discussion on the strategy as well as the requirements. And I think that one of the other things about Mr. Yenrel's proposal is that he has a warranty. He has a results warranty that says if things don't work out, he'd be happy to, I don't know, be happy. We can't presume that, but that, that he would offer his services at half the cost in, in selecting a, a search for a new manager. So I think that, that, that certainly is a, is a good selling feature. We have had experience and this board has not, but we have, Mr. Morris and I have had experience with Vermont League of Cities and Towns and, and their recruitment process. We selected them the last time because they are the preeminent authority on municipal work in the state of Vermont. And we felt as though that we would be best served by using their services for a manager search. We, we found that there were certain aspects of that process that were lacking. And, and we don't feel as though we want to reward them again with a, with a contract. The, the other firm, and, and you do have a, a copy of their proposal here. Unique approach to town government. And we're not sure that they have the, the necessary experience to provide the services that we're looking for. I, I, I will say that, that I apologize for, for, for our tardiness in getting this information to you so that you can have a better chance to, to, to absorb it and feel good about making a decision. The, the rush and, and, and is that we do have a, a, a schedule. And this, this process will happen very quickly, although there'll be long lapses of time. But if you look at the proposal, there is a step-by-step process and, and it literally takes months and months and months to accomplish. So, so first step is, is scheduled to begin at early part of July with the needs assessment and interviewing the select board members. And if we want to keep on schedule, I, I think we should act tonight to approve the contract with Municipal Management Services.
So I, I'd like to not act tonight because, one, I have another chance to read the other proposals, there are other RFPs. And two, I think it'd be beneficial. One, I don't know Tom at all. I know you two have both worked in the past. But I'd love to have like a ten-minute Zoom interview with all, each of the three that you guys are possibly recommending, just so we get a little more information. As an example, my experience is when you're doing recruitment, use LinkedIn as a big tool. And when I looked up Tom's LinkedIn, he has twenty-four followers. When I looked in, up the principal of the other firm, he had twenty-five hundred. You know, so I just would love to understand his strategy around recruiting and making sure we get enough candidates that are aware of the, I understand he understands Springfield. But that was a kind of a, I just want to hear what he has to say of how does yours go to be, doesn't use LinkedIn as an example. And just have a couple conversations with all three. Like, I don't know, I saw that the other one was Dominic, is that his name?
Yeah.
I don't know if he was the lead the last time. So it's almost like we're dealing a little bit with a different entity, but that would be, those are my thoughts.
Other thoughts?
I know Tom. And I mean, I could be ready to make the decision tonight, but I respect, you know, Heather's question. It's not, I think it's prudent to follow that course.
I too would like a little bit more time just to read this because I saw it today, but I didn't get a chance to get all the way through.
Yeah. And I think both Mike and I apologize on the getting this information to you in a short notice. Is, there was times last week we tried to meet. I wasn't available and he wasn't available. We went into the weekend. We, Mike did work hard on a discussion with me and put this, put it together and try to get it ready for tonight. So I do applaud that effort. Jeff?
I saw what I said. Over the next two weeks, we're going to have to have a special meeting to set the tax rates anyway. So it's all different than next regular board. We could, that would, you wouldn't have to wait until those meetings like July twenty-second or. Act on the three second actually, it's also. So there is another meeting coming. It is on your own calendar, like ten reservations. Wait a whole month to decide.
When do you anticipate that? We, we don't get the information from.
We get the information, say, June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. Usually the first week, which is July fourth.
July fourth, which is. Right, so.
Yep.
And, and so does, do people want to have an interview or Zoom interview with these people? Or could we go to executive session?
We have that executive session. Interviewing, if you chose to interview everybody, that could definitely be an executive session. And full disclosure, I, I know Dom, I know Alex, which is the big thing local, and then obviously I know Tom. Just for full disclosure, I know all three of the gentlemen.
Sure. Do you think we could, you could reach out to them, to schedule that when, during the tax rate meeting is going to be? Or at least get an availability?
Well, we could have interviews. Those interviews are conducted before the tax rate's set. So sometime this week or next week, schedule the interviews.
Okay.
Which would be an executive, special executive session, special meetings, executive session. And try to, of course, I try to get them all the same. Is evening best for you guys or?
It's all in place.
Yeah.
Throw out some dates and times, I'm flexible for the most part. Me too.
Let's see what works out for those guys.
If we're doing Zoom interviews with the applicants, we can be on Zoom too.
Yeah, that's the plan. That person could easily leave. There has to be a physical presence, I don't know, but it doesn't have to. You can't completely zoom. That's a hybrid. I can be here, so don't worry about that.
Okay. Well, we want to try to set that up.
Abby?
Are you looking at next week being the first week of July? Including Monday, the thirtieth? Today's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Yeah, I might try to use it this week or begin or being happened next week. So we have the, you said before, we said the tax rate. So you can act on the tax rate if it confirms. It was also great.
Okay, work, I work on that work.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you for all your work, guys. Appreciate it.
All the work, just trying to find the time when we could get together. Like I say, when I was available, he wasn't, Mike wasn't, and when Mike was available, I wasn't.
No.
So I didn't get into the loop yet, but sorry. Okay, moving on to letter E, the agenda, financial reports.
Yeah, I have the warrants here and they're on the website. That are through last week. I will, I will say that there's only one extraordinary, unusual expense. It is the first, the first invoice. First invoice for the water project, I three on Bridge Street. So you'll see that's four hundred and forty thousand.
Ouch. Yeah.
It's, I know somebody's going to see it and ask what it is. So it's on the water contract. So we'll get reversed by the, by the bond. It's all.
Where, where does that project stand right now?
There, on Bridge Street. Yeah, Bridge Street, they expect to be done with Bridge Street by, well, latest the last week of July. And then I's first, I expect to go over to Bill Road and Ross Street.
Yeah.
We have a meeting on Wednesday for, they update the timeline, but that's the timeline that we had the last week.
Very good. Moving on, future agenda items. Standing on my left, Heather Framp.
Hell.
Oh, I missed one. Steve Garappa.
It's time that we have our this week. I know you have something.
That you made? You said you had a retreat this week?
Yeah, we had a retreat.
Okay. Yeah.
Where? School park, school? Now, secret.
We can't do stuff in secret. We can't do anything in secret. Yeah, we're jealous.
Okay, Mike, future agenda items.
Yes, the ordinance committee has met with our, our water and wastewater department and reviewed changes to our utilities ordinance, chapter twenty-six, which we've approved. And we will have our first reading at our next select board meeting.
That's the next regular select board meeting as opposed to.
Regular.
Setting the tax rate.
Yes. Next regular.
I am going to pass this evening. Tara? Mike Schmidt? Moving on to committee reports and announcements. Do we have any committee reports and announcements, Steve? Heather?
Yep.
Mike? Gave mine. Same, Tara?
Yep.
And Mike Schmidt?
Well, we have.
Airport.
Well, so I don't have anything in the airport, but we do have the joint planning commission select board meeting. Jeff? When's the joint planning commission select board meeting?
It's in July.
Oh, is that for, okay.
They're still coming up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Very good. Also in our select board packets, and the select board members do receive other minutes of correspondence. And that includes this week, the trustees of public funds draft minutes of five nineteen twenty-five. The Springfield Regional Development Corporation draft minutes of May twenty-seventh. Springfield Housing Authority draft minutes of June tenth. And the Springfield Trails Rural Economy draft minutes of June twenty-third. Those are available on the websites as well, and hard copies can be retrieved from the town manager's office. That brings us up to a portion of our agenda where we'll look for citizens' comments. Would you have any citizen that would like to speak on behalf of themselves for any business that has been on or not on the agenda? Doug, I see your hands up.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I wanted to just throw out, I, you see, or I hear a lot of engineering costs going into what's going on. I don't know how, how many more projects that the town will have. But my, my thought was, would it be more cost-effective for a town to actually hire an engineer to design these projects, or we just don't have enough projects to do that? Or we just don't have enough projects to do that?
Okay, yeah, I'll go over. The, the problem is, uh, that the federal government, which is funding a lot, helping find a lot of these projects, has a, a whole procurement process that you have to go through to qualify. So you couldn't just use a, a staff, a staff engineer, uh, who, who by their very nature would be a generalist. Um, that's why we'll be, they are a few. We actually have them selecting three different firms as a result of they are a few, because they specialize in different, um, types of engineering. Uh, so it wouldn't, and even then, it suffered through the procurement process if the government doesn't accept this RFP that we do for engineers. That, so it doesn't really make sense for us to have one and be nice sometimes. Um, but really, if I mean, there are three firms for the different types of engineers, it, it's been, um, a series of all the last two weeks. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Other participants, I would like to speak this evening, recognizing Wes Marshall.
Hi, Wes Marshall from Springfield. Everybody knows that Bridge Street is pretty well toward, uh, all this construction. And I'm wondering, few of us wondering, how is, how is the road going to be prepared afterwards? Are they just gonna fill in temporary asphalt where the ditches are? Or are they gonna cut off the rest of the asphalt and pave it as a whole new road?
Uh, the, the initials, the initial part will, will be the, the trench paving. And then likely, it'll, it'll have to be finished up the following year for the, for overall.
It, it's tough to schedule paving of a road such as that when the construction is going on, because you don't know when they're going to finish them. And you don't know when the paving companies are going to have access to get back. So typically, there's kind of like a year delay. So like Jeff said, they'll, they'll have to, uh, prep the road, uh, for temporary, and then it'll have to go on a schedule for a future date. And same with, uh, Will Dean Road and Seaventworth.
Okay, so they'll, all the dishes will be sort of temporarily patched to this next year in the wintertime, the next year overlay or tear up the whole road to make it, oh, did all the lights switch?
Uh, yeah, second during the sun, that's Seaventworth. This year they're freshening up, so Seaventworth catch up with me back. Then you fight it. So then next year, next year we go through with the old.
It is kind of hard to figure out when the contract should go, how late the asphalt plans to be open.
Right, it's probably going.
Yeah, it just seems to me, you put down the temporary asphalt, you know, wherever, how many thousands it's gonna cost, and you have to tear it up again.
But that's part of the code.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, well, not that, but it's part of the funding.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so fun, anything outside funding, only, only part of the project is to use trench, um, trench paving, paving the whole road. That change.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know 15 years ago, it was something we can't just include the whole road paving.
I just thought maybe to bring that machine and a tear ball and that asphalt, you know, pieces here and there.
It, it's a great thought, but again, when the construction project is done, and when you can get access to the paving companies, because they're scheduled, they're already scheduled out. And, uh, try, trying to coordinate that would, you, you probably would strike out more than you would have success. And that's something the town would want to do their skid box on. That's, that's too big of a project for that.
Well, it's too much, um, too much trap on that road for a skid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't, don't like, don't forget, we, we employ an engineer to advise us on road maintenance. So, you know, anything we say here is just pure speculation until we, we have our engineer look at it. He makes the determination as to what the best course package is as far as the consideration for next year's paving program.
Anyone else this evening? Not seen any attempts to speak. Thanks very much for, uh, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Yay.
In the past, we've had a joint, something, school board meeting. They're both, both.
I'm the one that started him.
Okay.
Scott Adams, myself.
So maybe something we can talk about somewhere, I'll bring it up at our retreat. Once a year.
Something like that, yeah.
It worked out really well. Because we get to talk to each other, and it's for speaking on the board. What you don't want.
You could invite, you could invite us on your retreat.
They're part of that school.
It's air conditioned, though.
That's true.
You want me to answer it?
I, I would think, I'm, I'm not, I'm just speculating. I would think, uh, we get past the summer, maybe, uh, get into before budget sessions, or we can just have a conversation. I know once we get into budget session, then we both become busy with meetings multiple times.
In the past, as you know, it's been kind of true. Now, now that it's super tough.
Yeah. We don't have any attempts to ask citizens' comments or speak. I will move on, and, uh, we still need the executive session to go into, uh, we need, we need a motion to go into the executive session under, uh, 1BSA, section 313-1A and section 313-1B, for the purpose of discussing contracts and labor relation agreements with employees. And of course, that is where, uh, one or more could be marginalized by, uh, public reading and comments. Uh, and, uh, that is, uh, one of the provisions of going into an executive session for contracts. Is it just one labor contract that we're going in for?
Yes, one labor contract, uh, one labor union, but one non-union issue.
Okay.
As with the contract.
So contract and labor relation agreement.
I'll make the motion to join the executives' discussion.
Sorry. So we do have a motion to go executive session for purposes of contract and labor relation agreements with employees. Uh, is there any expected business to come out of this? Not at this time. Informational only for board members, so therefore, uh, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session, starting on my left, Heather Frim.
Hi.
Mike Martin.
Hi.
Christie Morris says aye. Power Chase.
Aye.
And Mike Schmidt.
Aye.
That is five in the affirmative, and we will move into executive session. And again, there's no anticipated or expected business to come out of that. Well, the time is, if I can catch my phone, 7:58.
7:58.